Hey, everybody. I'd like to call the Economic Development Commission meeting to order. Today is October 10th, 2013. Have anybody have any comments on the minutes? Changes? Nope? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Reports. Nancy Ansee from the Farmington Valley Visitors Association will not be here today, but she did give me her comments, which I will read. And I will also hand out their, one of their events, the Haunted Miniature Golf event that's coming up, in case you have nothing to do that particular night. And she said, and I will read, "Sorry, I'm unable to attend this meeting, but the Farmington Valley Visitors Association Board meeting had to be changed because our Haunted Miniature Golf fundraiser begins on Thursday, October 17th. As I have to be at the Farmington Miniature Golf at 8:00 a.m., I can't be in both places. The big push for Farmington Valley Visitors Association during August, September, and the beginning of October has been to finish our 2014 20th Anniversary Guide and plans for the Haunted Miniature Golf. I've enclosed flyers for everyone with the eight dates and times that the Haunted Miniature Golf will be open. It's not just for kids and families, so I hope to see you there. We begin decorations on October 8th, if the weather permits. In September, Farmington Valley Visitors Association Guides were, excuse me, were present at the September Fest, Sam Collins' Day, and Avon Day. We're still working on a film mixer, a lecture through the Historic Site Committee, and our 20th Anniversary Gala." Would you like a copy of the Haunted Miniature Golf? If you do, we have extras here, so we'll just pass those out. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to Simsbury-Main Street Partnership.
Good morning. I'm going to be a little brief. I have an 8:00 meeting as well. Because the EDC did not meet on, in September, I just wanted to pass out the newest, the second edition of the Discover Simsbury, to thank everybody that participated in the Taste in Simsbury. It was hugely successful, and it, we had people from all over the state of Connecticut attend. I know that Dominique Avery, on behalf of tourism, was there, and she had been polling people to see where they had driven in from and came over afterwards and said that, you know, really, people had come from everywhere. Thanks to the town of Simsbury, Main Street helped organize the Art Town Tent for September Fest, provided a way for organizations of Simsbury to, you know, talk about what they do to the public, for the public, and hopefully recruit some volunteers. So we had everybody from the Simsbury Public Library to the Historical Society and others involved. So thanks to the town for providing that on behalf of September Fest. Simsbury, as you know, in the, I think, two months ago, in Hartford Magazine, was previewed as one of the top towns in the different rankings. We've been working with Hartford Magazine. They're going to be doing a profile of the Simsbury November Edition. I spoke with the reporter that's handling it. She's also going to be talking a little bit about how there's been a renewed interest in development in downtown with the charrette and the new zoning regulations. And I think, again, credit to the Planning Commission, to the Planning Department, to the Board of Selectmen, and to zoning, you know, for the charrette and for getting those new regulations. I think we're very lucky to have people like the Board of Selectmen and Hiram and others. So, you know, it is making an impact, and Hartford Magazine will be featuring some of those things in the November issue. Just a reminder, a couple of things coming up that we've been either partnering on or helping out with, and Mary may go into it more, but the town is doing their Halloween event for the first year to kind of get in front of the last two storms. And also, because I think that community events, townwide sponsored events, are becoming much more popular as a safe alternative for trick-or-treating and, not just trick-or-treating, but also providing other things besides just that focus on candy and the community coming together. And I believe she'll give you some more details, but it means you help write the press release for that. We're working with an amazing organization, which maybe Jay knows of, the Simsbury Junior Women's Club. And, you know, just a reminder that we've always worked with this organization, but there's kind of that renewed interest. They're so active. These, you know, they tend to be the head of household, the purchasers. They make those decisions. And so it's really important that we continue having that relationship where we keep reminding them how important it is to shop locally. They're doing their Luminary Drive, which is their big fundraiser. I think not only is it a great way to celebrate and, you know, kind of that visual sense of community that Simsbury has, but it's also a fundraiser, and all of the proceeds stay in Simsbury. They actually put all of those proceeds back into what they consider worthwhile organizations and organizations that are making an impact. So individuals can purchase them. It's actually on the Shop Simsbury webpage, the Simsbury Juniors Women's Club webpage. You can purchase them as individuals, and then businesses can also sponsor them. But just a reminder, as we're coming towards Halloween. The school piece that I'd been talking about before the last couple of meetings, we're a little bit behind where we had wanted to be, but we have a designer who's giving us an incredible deal, and unfortunately, his plate got filled up. Right now, a draft has gone out, which has been circulated to the committee, has been circulated to the Superintendent of Schools, and has been circulated to the amazing Realtors that we've put together. We're getting their input, and have been getting their input, and hope to have draft two, which, you know, if all goes well, will be the final. So I'll have a final piece to show the Economic Development Commission by the next meeting, is our goal. If you haven't heard, just a reminder that Metro Beast has moved from Simsbury Town Shops. They've moved over to the 1820 House, which are their new digs. I think I'd mentioned that in the August meeting. It's working out very well. They have about 30 different events planned between now and, you know, booked events between now and the end of the year, which is amazing. We happened to be there for a lunch on Monday, and they were turning people away. And that's, rarely happens for lunch, you know, in most places, but they did not have, they were booked full. L Designs is moving. One of our businesses is going to be relocating from the courtyard. They are moving into Simsbury Town Shops, into the old Mark Brady space. That will happen. They're going to be open, I think, by October 29th, so the end of the month should be a nice seamless transition. Linda Gialino has been a long, had been a longtime Simsbury resident and is a board member. We've been working with 690 Hot Meadow Street. We'd actually been, Main Street and myself had been working with the owner before he'd ever come to Simsbury, when he was still looking at properties. There looks like there will be some sort of housing component there, as well as a community, a community focus. They're not quite sure exactly what that will look like yet, but we'll give you some more information as they get closer. Right now, from what I understand, well, I do know that they are working with an architect, and so they're going to be doing some different renderings, and they'll be coming before the appropriate commissions as they get a little bit further along. And then, as I mentioned, my apologies, I have an 8:00 meeting, and I cannot attend the next EDC meeting, but I will be sending a board member in my place. So I didn't know if you had any questions.
Is the Metro Beast space bigger than what they had across the street?
Yes. What they've done is, they've taken, when you walk in, that kind of main level, they've taken the dining room there. They've also taken the downstairs, which, you know, was that kind of failed nutmeg cafe and then kind of sat dormant. They have the outdoors for patios. They just started serving, which Courtney's thrilled about. They just started serving breakfast for the guests at 6:00 a.m., but, you know, it's a bigger space. It's, I think, quite frankly, it's a, it's a better fit for them, and it's really brought kind of that renewed interest back to Metro Beast.
When I came to town in 1955, the Simsbury House had been written up in Fortune Magazine as one of the 10 best restaurants in the country. It was a big, big deal. And people would come far and wide to the Sims, particularly their, their summertime lunches outside on the veranda. So this is a little bit of history coming around and repeating. It's a great fit.
Well, and it's also, I mean, you know, we had talked to, and I know that Mary had talked to, you know, we, Main Street did the PBS thing on Gifford Pin Show, you know, and now they're at the birthplace, they're at his birthplace. So, I mean, there's a lot of really interesting things to do and interesting history there that, you know, take advantage of this national exposure, take advantage of this, this special that's been running this entire year on Gifford Pin Show and about Simsbury. So I agree. And also, it's notable to mention that in Hartford Magazine, the top baker's dozen of chefs, we had three. We had Chris Bressberry from Metro Beast. We had Ryan Jones from the Millet Two Tea, which is fantastic, because Careful is getting recognition as well, and then Tyler Anderson from Millwrights. And I think that's amazing, because if you look at all the other places that are listed, no other community has three of the top chefs.
What did you net on the Taste of Simsbury?
Twenty, I believe, 23,000? Somewhere around there. We broke down, we're waiting for an outstanding payment. Simsbury Bank is our new presenting sponsor, and because it kind of happened there mid-cycle, we're breaking down their payments, so we won't have their last payment until January, and then I'll know for sure.
Just in keeping with your comment about keeping the proceeds in Simsbury, for the life of me, I just don't understand, for the past four or five years that I'm aware of, the Simsbury Fire Department takes their annual golf outing at Blue Fox Run. Taxpayers of this town fund that fire department, and they also fund Simsbury Farms. And why they do that, go to a private club, is beyond me. They should be, they should be using Simsbury Farms to keep that money here in town.
I agree. And, you know, that's something that I think we've been trying to chip away on. If you guys remember, a couple of years ago, we started with the PTOs, and we had success there, because, you know, I got a lot of complaints from people like you saying, "Listen, you know, we support the schools. They're very important, and yet I'm seeing my kids' fundraisers at Flatbreads or Ben &amp; Jerry's." And so we, we started working. And I think it's an education process, and I see Kevin and I see some of the people that do that. So I wasn't aware of that. But again, I think the, the more things that, as we're paying attention to them, we're trying to return them back to Simsbury and reminding people how important it is. Because if we don't support the businesses in Simsbury, then they go away. And they not only happen to be businesses that pay taxes, but the majority of our businesses are mom and pops, and they live here. You know, they live here. Their kids go to school here, or they raise their kids. So I think it's doubly important.
Good morning. Welcome, Mr. Dorbusch, EDC. Just a quick update. I know we've had a conversation with our golf pro, Simsbury Farms Golf Pro. We've reached out to the fire district, asked them to consider Simsbury Farms bringing it back home.
The fire district, as you all know, has a separate taxing district. The town has no authority over the fire district. If this is something the Economic Development Commission thinks is a good initiative at Mr. Dorbusch's suggestion, you might write them a letter and suggest that as we work together to bring more business to Simsbury, would you consider or have a dialogue with us or the EDC about staying in town? Excellent suggestion. We've tried. They are separate there, independent, and good suggestion.
I realize they're separate, but I'll tell you, when you're a taxpayer...
But you know what? Again, to Mary's point, it might go, it might go a long way to have, you know, instead of just kind of the, from the town side, to have other commissioners and other entities make that suggestion, to put a little pressure, and also remind them, educate them how important it is. Because it helps their tax, I mean, it directly helps their tax base as well, because they're a separate taxing entity.
Yeah, considering we have three golf courses in town.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then the final thing, the hockey tournament. So, again, thanks to the First Selectmen, we held a meeting with Bob Crawford from the Hockey Association. And it became a very interesting meeting. We, we kind of started out by talking about, you know, our main goal was to talk about the Junior Nationals that we had mentioned, that I'd mentioned in the previous meeting, because it really is, you're looking at about approximately $2 million over, per year, for the next two years, is the anticipated income that we will see through lodging and restaurant and retail. But it became really interesting, because in talking to Bob, what we realized is, there are actually a ton of hockey events that are going on that are even bigger, maybe not press-wise, but as far as people-wise, that are even bigger than what we knew about, than, than what anybody virtually knows about. So what, what I think we've started is a really great partnership. We've talked about Main Street working with the town and also working with the Chamber to put together packages. Main Street is going to put together lodging packages, packages like we've done. We're going to do entertainment. We're going to do, you know, things that, we're creating basically an entire website off of the Shop Simsbury website. So it'll still be the Shop Simsbury, but creating an entire website that you can link, and you can find out all the packages ahead of time. But then people find out information two ways. Some people, as Bob and some of the hockey, the hockey president mentioned, will do a lot of intense work beforehand. They'll do a lot of research. Other people will make the decisions as they're checking in. So we're also going to be working with the town to have check-in packages, so that people can get those information both ways. You know, sometimes people will decide the spur of the moment, "I checked in. Where am I going to grab lunch? Where am I going to grab my team dinner tonight?" et cetera. On September 29th, they had a Wolfpack game. They're doing their tournament on October 19th. They have a Thanksgiving tournament. They have the Junior Ice Showcase starting December 22nd. They have the Winter Hockey Tournament, I believe, after Christmas. They have a Spring Hockey Tournament in April. They're going after things like regional, synchronized skating. So really kind of that renewed interest in partnering with the Hockey Association and creating packages, because, again, I think it benefits. Simsbury rarely gets true, I want to say tourism dollars, because in Connecticut, the majority of tourism dollars come from friends and family that visit other residents. So this is one of those kind of true tourism type of dollars, type of initiatives. And there's, there's, from what Bob said, he's actually moving a lot of the stuff from Cromwell, I believe, up towards Simsbury. And so there really is some great, great exposure opportunities.
Is he the, the point person for hockey and Simsbury? Or are there other people?
Well, what happens is, he's the owner. He's the owner. But then, what we, what you end up doing, because it becomes a little bit more confusing, then each, each group has control over, for example, their tournament. This, so you end up starting with him, but then you have to also work down the chain as well.
Are you going to have the website that you're talking about? Is he going to put that link up on his website?
Yes.
It's like Simsbury Hockey, Northern Lights, all those organizations?
That is, that is the anticipation.
Going to put the link on their webpages as well?
That is the anticipation. And in fact, in addition to that, for example, with the Winter Hockey Tournament that's coming, they said, "Listen, if you get us all this information ahead of time," they send it out in their newsletter, their electronic newsletter as well. So, yeah. And there's going to be some kinks to work out. We're getting this together. But again, the first step is getting them to stay in Simsbury. That is crucial. Getting them to, you know, that's why we moved them from Bradley International Airport into Simsbury. The closer they stay in Simsbury, the better the chance they have of spending their dollars here. And then, so the lodging specials become incredibly important. And our partners, both Classic Hotels and also then Marriott, because there's too much business, and you want to keep them as close to Simsbury, will be offering amazing deals. They've gone overboard, you know, because a lot of hockey parents, we also work with the hockey parents to say, "What would you like?" And they said, "Listen, we wouldn't stay at a Simsbury Inn." And we said, "Well, why?" They said, "Oh, we consider it a little too fancy." Well, the inn turned around and said, "We want the business," and they went over backwards. They actually did things like cleared out their ballroom, and they allowed the kids to play floor hockey, which, you know, I, I can't think of any hotel that would do that. You know, and they, they did, they did movie screenings and things. I mean, they really went overboard. And in return, what happened is, the parents loved it. They got that nice hotel. They got it at a better rate than they would have gotten something else, and they got a ton of amenities. And things like that help us to work with Bob and work with the skating center to continue to get that business back. Because as these contracts expire, a lot of times, they look at how, what was our, you know, what was the experience? Did our parents like it? Did our, did our associations like it? Et cetera. And if they do, they're more likely to come back.
It would be interesting to do sort of, as a hockey parent, I can say, like a, a map or something, like a sign that has hockey skates on it, that a business can post in their window during that tournament. So a hockey parent who might not have made reservations for their team or something like that knows that if I'm walking in here, and that I can show some sort of tournament pass or something, that I can get a discount at, you know, whether it's Subway or Little City, whatever it is. And it identifies that business as being a participant in, you know, this tournament. And maybe providing a map of downtown, identifying, taking the maps we have and identifying those businesses that are participants, so the families can make choices.
Yes, we are doing that.
That's what we're working on. In fact, the Chamber doesn't have a map of the northern town.
Right.
So we've asked them to work with Sarah, because Sarah has a map of the entire Hot Meadow Street, so that we could involve the businesses. And that's what Main Street's been doing.
And we've done, I mean, we've done this before. What we're just doing is on, on a greater level, but I do like that kind of visual.
I mean, if it's the sign that it's just hockey skates, and they get, I can get a discount this week on this.
Well, in addition to, you know, you, they want to, you want to provide them with the lodging, the dining, and then, we're even going so far as Main Street did the parties, because a lot of times, some of the teams will want to throw like a team party. So we'll be working again with Maple Tree and Antonos and some of the places that have private parties to say, "Listen, get a, you know, get the special menu," because a lot of times they'll say, "Listen, I want to do a last-minute pizza party tomorrow night for the team." And we want to show them that we have, we literally have everything they could possibly need.
Well, as an idea, to generate some more business for Simsbury Farms, we always have open sheets of ice up at the farms. These kids never, they rarely don't want to be on the ice. Okay? So have, we've got the facilities up there. Offer a pizza party package for teams where they can get an open sheet, and they can use the warming hut and do some sort of team party up there.
I like that. I will say too, though, the night, there, there has been a great coordination, because there, with some of these bigger tournaments, you have between 50 to 100 teams coming in, that they have actually worked out. So they're not only using the skating center, they're using, they're utilizing Westminster and the Simsbury Farms ice as well, because the sheer volume, you know, for these kids skating, I mean, it maxes out everything. So I think that's great, because, again, you're talking about two other very important entities, Westminster and the town, getting...
Well, and they may use AOF and Loomis as well, so you want them to come back.
Yes, agreed.
Do we have a way of measuring how many people show up year in and year out?
They know how many tournament participants.
They know exactly.
They know exactly how many teams are participating. And you can, I mean, having attended these tournaments for years, it's, it's an expensive endeavor to travel and go to these, and you bring your whole family, and you do spend a lot of money in the towns that you go to.
This is the first time the national championships have been in Connecticut.
Yes.
Or in New England. That's why it's a big deal. It's an even bigger deal, because this is the first time.
And that's for this, that's for this season?
That's for 2014, 2015.
That'll be, that's why we're planning now, because we're getting ready for the national championships. But because of these partnerships, we can roll out some of these ideas with some of the smaller hockey, as Chris said, some of the hockey tournaments, we're going to roll out this package as well. But what we're really focused on is the national championships coming to Simsbury and Hartford 2014.
We've hosted other tournaments, Simsbury Hockey, you know, so...
Yes, very successfully. But this really, again, you know, as, for example, with Hartford, with the gymnastics, they look at, in the NCAA tournament with the women, again, having these types of high-profile tournaments, and the tournament that, that Mary was speaking, the tournament that we started these discussions based on, has, these kids go on and play professional hockey. It's the highest caliber. It's the NCAA juniors. It's one of the highest calibers. So you have press coming in, interest in people. And again, the Hartford Convention and the Visitors Bureau, or the new name, has estimated that the payout to this region per year is about $2 million. That's substantial. And we want the majority of that $2 million to be spent in Simsbury. And that's our goal in putting together these packages.
Have we spoken to ESPN at all about their coverage of this?
We have not.
Only because they could, you know, another idea for brainstorming is, they could do kind of local shoot. They could do kind of remotes of having a little mini-studio and doing, you know, player interview, coach interview, that type of thing, you know, on-site. And if we have something set up for them, whether it's, you know, near the, outside the skating center, or whether it's right, you know, kind of downtown that draws lots of people in, there's a lot of, you know, kind of ESPN folks who...
I'm not being rude. I'm writing this down.
Yeah, yeah.
I really am writing this down.
Who live, who live in the area. So that, that might be something interesting for them to do. They have, they got a few stations of programming, so...
Well, you know, that's a suggestion we can make. I, I think we have to tread carefully, because I think that they all have different agreements and things. But the better, you know, the more suggestions we can make like this to these different groups and to this, to make this even better, I think. Again, we want to make the experience as pleasurable as possible to continue getting the business. And, again, the goal is to continue having these types of tournaments, especially the high-profile ones in Simsbury.
Any other questions?
Okay. My apologies. I do have to run.
Item number four, status of the marketing study, Hartford Charrette Process and Big Y.
I'm going to start, and then I'm going to join me. The website has the reports. I asked Mark if I could print out copies, but he said that he couldn't print it all. So if you need copies, let us know. Good morning. We're really excited about where we are in terms of the Hartford marketing study. We had a great weekend, thanks to Hiram organizing our gateway planning. We had over 200 people participate. We had a great recommendation. We even saved some money in order to have the consultants come back and meet with us. So Hiram actually is putting together a date for the formal presentation of the report with the consultants. You can ask your own questions, and we can have some time to look over the report. We know that Hartford is thrilled with the process. They participated throughout the process. They said that the marketing study has already helped CB Richard Ellis in marketing the site. So we're really excited about that. Obviously, this is a privately-owned site, and the town is working very hard to partner with them, to help them sell their site. But we have to respect that it is privately-owned, and we make sure that we get approval for everything that we do from Hartford, because it is their site. Just a quick review, and then Hiram can give you the details. You have a copy of the final report. It's on the web. The partners who have the report are State Department of Economic Development officials. We actually had a meeting last week and have ongoing conversations. They have that report. They're using that report in their marketing materials. The real estate broker has the report. CB Richard Ellis, John McCormick, was part of the conversation over the course of the week and has been ongoing. We know the Governor's Office has the report. We also are working with DCD to put a one-page summary together so they could use that in their promotional and marketing materials as well. So your thoughts on how, what your feedback is on, on this recommendation is critical. The role of the Economic Development Commission going forward is critical, so we look forward to having a conversation on next steps. When we have that meeting together with Gateway Planning, they'll meet to present the draft code changes. Again, these are recommendations for suggestions that the town could partner with private entity in Hartford to look at future growth. The land use study committee will also review the report and the code changes, and I know you have representation on that study committee. We have finished our review of all the legal programs that are available to towns to assist in tax incentives or any other type of incentives the town may wish to offer for economic development projects, like the Hartford or other projects as well. DCD officials are going to work with us to, and Hartford, to schedule a developer showcase tour of the site. They are working on putting together a list of potential investors. They have some key investors that they think have the wherewithal and the bandwidth to develop a site such as this. And they'll be working with us on a date to have that developers' tour. The Hartford is working with us on finalizing a transition timeframe. The sale of Hartford is not going to be overnight. They have, since they first notified the town last March, they have indicated this is a two- to three-year process of transitioning out their employees and transitioning the process. So we're working to finalize that timeframe so that we could let, use that in our marketing materials and also use that in our budget planning, because obviously, we have to know when to anticipate revenue changes. Other partners that we're working on with, coming up with ideas and incentives and different programs, besides the Hartford, besides the real estate broker, we had a meeting Tuesday with the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, asked for their assistance in helping us work through some of the marketing plans. The Metro-Hartford Alliance, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center, and we're looking at other organizations and resources that can help us. Just finally, we're open to other suggestions and ideas. Besides the showcase tour, we're looking at forums. We're also looking for some business ambassadors, and maybe that's a role the Economic Development Commission can take in coordinating. Folks who would be available to help with tours of the facility, folks who have contacts in the real estate market. We have a lot of developers and folks in our own backyard, and it would be great to enlist their assistance and their help in helping us use some of their networks and some of their contacts to help market the site. And so we look forward to answering any questions or thoughts that you have. And I just ask Hiram to add any additional information that...
Can I just comment on something you just said? As a real estate agent myself, and I know that it's privately-owned, and they have an exclusive relationship with their broker. However, after having contacted the broker to get information for a potential developer, they are requesting that your client's information be divulged to them prior to releasing any information on the site, which goes against the contracts that we typically have with our clients of not releasing their information. So it's a little frustrating that they, in, you know, a couple of particular instances, they don't want to release any of the maps or any of the information... they don't want to release any of the maps or any of the information about portions of the parcel because they want your client's contact information, which is not typically the protocol of how you do business when you've got an exclusive relationship with your client. So I don't know how to navigate that because it is a privately owned facility. However, I would hope that they'd want to hear about any potential interest in the property.
Yeah, this is the first I'm hearing about it. And what I'd offer, Chris, is that we certainly could have a conversation offline.
Yeah.
I know there are real estate rules and regulations and ethics and all those, but I mean, the town would certainly be willing to facilitate a conversation between the broker and our local realtors.
Because many developers want to remain confidential.
Absolutely, absolutely.
For reasons.
Absolutely. If you would be the point person to coordinate that meeting, we could certainly facilitate that.
I can also tell you that there's a tremendous amount of information that's available on our side in the public sector.
Yeah.
And frankly, I'm not sure of what information you could ask that we don't have, frankly. Between the CIRC site, which has got a phenomenal amount of information on, if you haven't gone on there and looked at the Hartford listing there, there's an unbelievable amount of information. Because the Hartford let us into the building and let us conduct that process, we have a significant amount of, I would say, you could call them layman observations, we're certainly not the building officials, but we have a tremendous amount of information about the facility. So if you have any clients that are interested, and I've already had some people call me with regard to using potentially a part of the site for an off-site data service center, the computer center that's there, that's, that was leased by Mass Mutual is available. I had two people during the charrette come up and talk to me about that, off-site data storage facilities. So there's a lot of information out there about that. So I think there's a tremendous amount of info out there that we can give people if they would just, just contact us, Chris. So happy to do that.
I want to follow up. Hiram's absolutely right. We've had two significant conversations with potential developers that have remained confidential because they haven't expressed an interest in working with the Hartford yet. So an option would be to contact others and get the information that's available through our office. I think the report that's on the website, they have copies of, provides a tremendous amount of information in terms of zoning and square footage and use. So if there's anything additional, we'll host that meeting with the broker, but we also, we've been dealing directly with potential investors and developers in a confidential manner. So we're another option.
In terms of what could be done with the property, we have a phenomenal amount of information. It was generated from the charrette process. In terms of what the price is for the property, I mean, that's, that's between the developer and the owner, the current owner of the property and the realtors. We, it really wasn't divulged, so it's up to them. So we're anxious to see something move forward. There are a lot of really good ideas that have been put forth during that process. And thanks to the committee that helped put that whole process together, I think it was successful. We're very happy that the Hartford was, was happy with the process and we're anxious to see it continue. So any other questions you might have on it, I'm happy to answer them at any time, whether it's now or in the future, but please let us know. As Mary said, one of the things that we're doing is developing kind of a follow-up letter to DECD to actually sort of pin them down in terms of making sure that they're interested in helping us as much as they, they've indicated that they are. Coach, a couple of things that we are going to talk to them about and actually have a call for them today, with them today, is to assign a specific point person to the project, to make sure that there's a direct contact person at DECD that can give us all kinds of answers. You know, one of the most frustrating things in terms of dealing with any large development process, and especially this state, is getting, is a developer getting an answer quickly, getting an answer and getting it quickly. And those are really important. So we need a point person from DECD to do that and we're anxious that that'll, that'll happen. Mary said we, we've talked to them about the list of incentives. We've actually talked to, tried to talk to a couple of other towns about some of the incentives that may have been issued, authorized by the state for other large developments and we're waiting for some answers on that. One of the other interesting, really interesting things as far as I'm concerned is the state doesn't have a model for what's called a certified sites program. So large developers will come into a state, whether it's North Carolina, South Carolina, Arizona, whatever, and say, you know, is this, is this a certified site? In other words, has it been through the process? Has it been vetted? Has the, has the zoning been looked at? Have the soils been looked at? Has the, has the utilities, have the utilities to the site been quantified in terms of, so we know what we can go there? We don't have that program in Connecticut. And so we're anxious to say to the state DECD, look, we'd like to use this particular site as a model to create a certified sites program in the state. Don't know if they're going to accept that yet or not, but that's a suggestion that we're going to make to them and use this, this site as a model for that. So we're anxious to do that. We're looking for, again, assurances that the state will continue to work with CBRE and through this process and, and move this process forward as quickly as possible. Create essentially a development shovel-ready site for that north 40 acres that's currently vacant. I know a lot of people have stated they'd like to see it retained as a cornfield, that that's a cost to that. So whether that's going to happen or not is probably doubtful. But certainly we want to know whether, what could be built there? How quickly could it be built there? How quickly could permits, or entitlements as they're called in the rest of the world, be obtained for that particular site? And the possibility of the state participating with us in a, perhaps as a bridge in a cost-sharing agreement if there's a long-term process that has to go forward here. With such a large facility and during the process it was brought out, that is half the size of the Chrysler Building, you know, this is going to take some time. It's not something where somebody's going to come in 30 days now, they're going to close. So we're looking to the state to help us through possibly a bridge, whether it's financing or some sort of assurances or guarantees. If the state is serious about helping us, we're anxious to get them to, to agree to that as well. So that's what I basically got on the Hartford. Nice to have any other questions, Mark.
So the, the code that's being written, will this be adopted by the zoning?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay.
Yep. It'll go through a regular, regular code adoption process, public vetting process, public hearing process. The thing we have to be very careful about is we don't want to prepare something that's going to put any developer in a straitjacket. We want to make sure that it's flexible enough and yet gets the town what we want to see. This is going to be a real dance between the raindrops in terms of trying to make this work. So we'll have discussions with them next week, I believe, in terms of the framework, the basic framework for the code. We're going to do the code on that north 40 acres first because that's easiest and then do the code on the southern piece subsequently. That'll all come back for public hearing, public discussion, groups assist, design review, zoning, planning and so on for a discussion before it's adopted. Absolutely, yep.
During the discussions we all had, Hartford made mention, and please correct me if I've got it wrong, those three wings that they, they call them a tads, that they consider, well, they're beginning to lease out some of that space to outside entities?
Some space is already, the data center, for example, is already leased to Mass Mutual for a while. Their exact lease agreements and arrangements, I don't know, Alan. What they said during the process that I'm clear on is that the building could be broken up into three different modules.
Yeah, yes.
Could be.
True.
Those are still separate, they're, they're large, no question about that. The building itself, six, almost 640,000 square feet, so it's substantial, no question about it. And what a lot of people would like to see, of course, is somebody just to come in and buy it the way it is and use it. And while that's lovely, it's probably, in, in the new normal today, it's probably fairly unlikely. So breaking that building up into those pods is perhaps more likely. One of the critical things is we need to think about, and certainly the realtors, I'm sure, are thinking about rebranding the site. So it's not known as the Hartford site anymore, it's known as 200 Hop Meadow. And sort of rebranding it so that people begin to think about it as 200 Hop Meadow, where that's a, a place where a bunch of businesses are located, or some retail in some businesses, or some retail in some housing in some businesses at 200 Hop Meadow. And that's, the rebranding of that site will take place over time, I'm sure.
Are you left with the impression that this could be sold piecemeal? I mean, the, the consultant's summaries all seem to be multi-phased developments, a little healthcare, a little farming, a little this, a little that. Instead of like, the third was like an institution like a university, but that was like, you can hope. But do you think they could wish or desire that, as they're doing now, pod one goes to someone, pod two, the land in the parking lot might go, the 40 acres north might go to someone else? It could be a multi-phased.
You know, one of the, one of the beauties about the process that we've entered into with the Hartford is that whatever happens will be subject to an overall plan that we've all seen.
Form-based calling.
That we've all seen. I think the only entity that can really answer your question directly is probably the Hartford. However, from our point of view, what we want to see is, no matter if it's one developer or five developers that enter into this process, we want to see it comply with an overall comprehensive plan that'll benefit the town.
Just to add to Alan's question, they, Hartford officials at the charrette did say publicly they would consider leasing.
Yeah.
And they encouraged that. So that was, that was good to hear, that they're not necessarily waiting until they sell the entire parcel, they would be willing to enter into a long-term lease for parts of it or, they're very open to different combination.
Yeah, maybe Chris's comment. CB Richard, I don't know if it's still owned by Goldman Sachs. It used to be owned by Goldman Sachs. And there's a Goldman Sachs mentality, our way, highway. They were given this task by the Hartford. They've come up empty.
Well.
And, yeah, I mean.
I don't, I don't know that we know that yet.
Well.
They don't think that's early.
It's very early in the process too.
Yeah.
You know, to Hiram's point, this is, this is an enormous site. And, and getting, you know, a, a party or perhaps several parties on board to, you know, coordinate to do something, it's, it's going to take a, you know, it's going to take a substantial effort. I know something about the firm, I'm, it's only if they still belong to Goldman Sachs, but they don't like sharing things a whole lot. I think that's what Chris ran into. They don't like sharing commissions, right? They don't like, they don't like sharing money. Rest of my point. I mean, I, I'm familiar with Goldman Sachs, believe me. So I, I'm, you know, I, I see your point, but I don't think that has much to do with their success or their efforts in terms of thinking creatively with respect to getting the space either, either sold or leased. They've been hired by the Hartford as their agent to, to do one of the two. So I, I'm certain that they're, it's in their own financial best interests to, as, as quickly as possible, put together some type of package of, of lease or sale arrangement.
John McCormick's the right guy. See, I, I can say this, that during the process, they've been very, they've been very engaged in, in the process. They participate, participate, sorry, it's been a long week, participated in the stakeholder meetings. They were forthcoming with information when we asked them. There's obviously some information that they shared with the consultants and with us that is not necessarily public at this time, but could be, depending upon what the questions were that, that any potential buyer, buyer asked, which we understand, you know. We know that this is a, a difficult dance between a public or entity, the town, and the private organization at the Hartford. So we, we need to be very respectful of that boundary and we're, we're very careful of that, absolutely, so.
What, what happens from a real estate tax standpoint? I mean, does that, do the amount of taxes that they have to pay on the building change in any way if the building's empty?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a couple of things. One is there's real property tax for the building and the land, no question.
Right.
And that's what it is. There's certainly personal property, then I'm sure the assessor could give you a far better rundown on that. But once that building becomes empty of the computers and all the things that are in there, that will certainly probably change. We're very anxious to make sure that we sort of refill that building before any of that change happens. Some people don't really understand the significant amount of money that the Hartford, you know, it costs the Hartford every single year, not only just in real estate taxes, which is a very small part, but for the operations and, and maintenance is just, just incredible. So yeah, I'm sure that the assessor could.
And we've been very public with the Hartford. It was discussed during the charrette, there will be a point where the town will continue to get the real estate taxes, the personal property will be reduced a little bit. But there will come a point where the cost of maintaining the building will outweigh the benefit to them. And we've seen buildings of that magnitude be raised.
Right.
So we've been very vocal and public and asked the Hartford officials, that's our concern, that the building, if it is raised, we're not paying any taxes. And we want to make sure we move aggressively to fill, refill that building before that economic decision becomes a consideration.
Right, and, and that, that was going to lead to the next question, which is, it strikes me that you have to develop some kind of an incentive plan to evaluate, what is the town willing to discount, you know, the taxes as an incentive?
We've, we've done all of the legal opportunities. We have our, all the tools that the town has in its toolbox. We know of, we've shared that with the land use study committee, that'll be the next step in making a recommendation to the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance and trying to find out what the taxpayers of Simsbury are willing to provide to one private entity. Because we do have other developers of other sites also looking for incentives. So good, good point, we have all that information and look forward to the input of the Economic Development Commission on that.
And that's one of the key things, Gary, that, that I mentioned, that we're anxious to hear from the state in terms of what additionally, outside the statutes.
Right.
Not necessarily against the statutes, but outside the statutes.
Right.
What additionally would they be willing to throw into this? I've talked, for example, for some, some developers who want about 75,000 square feet, 100,000 square feet, which sounds like a lot, except when you compare it to the building, you need six or eight of them to fill that building.
Right.
We want to know what the state will do to help us out there. And so those are questions, actually, that I'll be discussing later today with DECD.
Have you had any responses to those queries?
I'm sorry?
Have you had any responses to those queries from the state?
Mary met with them last week, actually, and so we're in the process now sort of formalizing that and finalizing that and trying to, trying to pin that down.
They're looking at their programs, they, they're working with the Hartford and we haven't got anything in writing yet.
Yeah, because I mean, it, it seems to me that it's so critical to have that in hand and for these brokers, I, I hope they're looking at companies in the area that, about striking a deal to move them outside of Hartford. For instance, if there's a big company downtown that's got a big lease that's coming up for renewal, potentially to get the incentive to move somebody. I mean, it's going to take a, as you said, this is a big building, 640,000 square feet, but it has to be outside this area to, to get somebody to be willing to come, move their whole company or a big division of a company. You know, I'm thinking about UTC, for instance, they've got, you know, they're over in Farmington with Otis and Carrier and other big properties there. I don't know whether those are leased or owned at this point in time and, and what the status, if they are leased, what the status would be. But that's what you would need, is to have a package that you could attract a big company like that, a big division of a big company to come in and take over the whole building.
Couple of things, and, and not to, to throw water, you know, be a cold blanket, but one of the things that really frustrates me as a person who tries to help with the economic development of the town a lot, is that when one town comes in and steals something else from another town in Connecticut, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And one of the, so I'd like to, you know, hope that we'll be able to attract somebody from outside Connecticut to come in. I think we still, still need to, to talk to other entities, but for us to take something that's established in one town from another town, like Windsor did, for example, to the Hartford, doesn't make a lot of sense to me from a total long-term cost economic development standpoint.
And there are different programs, you know, it gets, it gets complicated because there are different programs available depending on where the company comes from. There are, there's state funding that's available for companies that come from outside Connecticut and grow jobs in Connecticut. There's different other programs that if, if companies, homegrown companies in Connecticut stay in Connecticut, there's then different programs if towns moving from one Connecticut town to another, there's less incentives. So there is, it's a complicated program of what the company needs, what the site is willing to do and certainly what the town can partner with. So it, we are aware of all the Connecticut programs that DECD offers.
Well, Hiram, I think, I agree, you don't like to steal, you know, from, from one town versus another. But the reality is, this is an expensive state to do business in. And if anything, the incentive is to move businesses out of this state.
Sure.
I'm telling you, this place is so expensive across the board. It's incredible. I come from New Jersey. The gas differential is 50 cents a gallon. You could go down the line with every, everything you pay for in, in this state and it's two, three times what I used to pay in, in New Jersey, which people think is an expensive state. So the incentive is to move out of this state. And I think it's going to be very difficult to get somebody to uplift and come into this state. So the only opportunity to get a big company is to take from one town versus the other. That, to me, is the economic reality of what we're faced with in the state of Connecticut.
The other, the other part that I wanted to answer to your, to your question, Gary, is I think that, that in addition to the, the overall sort of national and international, I want to emphasize that, marketing effort, we need to continue to do that. One thing that was made very clear to us by the assistant, the deputy. One thing that was made very clear to us by the Assistant Deputy Commissioner, D E C D, at one of our initial meetings, was that if we were to try to focus on taking some development out of one of the major cities, whether it's Bridgeport, or Stanford, or Hartford, we're in a very hard time from the state, because that's been their focus. I think that's just the reality of it.
Well, again, gets back to, you know, before someone wants to come to Simsbury, they have to want to come to Connecticut, we have that challenge. Before we can get incentives to use them with a developer in Simsbury, if they come from another town, then those state incentives aren't available. The state doesn't provide incentives for towns to move from town to town. So it's a challenge, and, you know, fortunately, in this case, you know, the Hartford is a partner, they're allowing us to help market, they're allowing us to have contacts, Gateway Planning has some international and national contacts that we're utilizing as well, and so we, you know, we really need the Economic Development Commission's role in helping us move this process forward.
We're still, we're still very optimistic about this process. I think initially, when we started out, a lot of people were kind of, sort of upset and almost panicky about it, but I think so far, we've taken good positive steps to try to move this forward, and everything we've heard so far is positive, so we're just kind of waiting for that other shoe to drop, and, and hopefully we'll come, come forward.
Barry, to, to your point about incentives that the town can offer, tax incentives, okay, are we controlled by the state on what we can do?
Yes.
On that?
We are.
And how tight is that control?
State law allows towns to do, do certain things and not other things, so we, you can do infrastructure, you can't abate certain things, we have a whole list, and I can share those with the Economic Development Commission, but we are limited by state law as to what a town can do.
There's seven years, this town can enter into agreements for up to seven years, and there are various things that are eligible, some things that are not eligible under state statutes. I think that what we're probably likely to see, and this is just total speculation on my part, is that somebody outside the area that we haven't seen before, whether it's foreign money, or whatever it happens to be, that will ultimately become the overall developer of the site, with a whole series of perhaps smaller entities that may fill that site, and ultimately a tremendous development potential in that northern 40 acres. If well-designed and put on the properly, correct, on the property correctly, could still be an overall positive benefit to the town, so that's what we're hoping for.
And I'm sure we'll have many more conversations on this issue over the months to come. So in the interest of time, anybody, any other questions on that? Could we go to the marketing study by Fairweather, and where...
Fairweather draft, I just got the draft, came in the other day, that will be presented to the Board of Selectmen at a special meeting on October 16th at 6:00 PM, prior to the 7:00 PM meeting. All the other boards and commissions are going to be invited to that, so Peter will be there to present the findings of Phase One of the, of the study. We'll try to get it up on the website as soon as possible, I need his permission to put it up as a draft, I just want to make sure he's had a chance to reread it before we put it up, probably up this week, or, or Monday at the latest, so you have plenty of time to look at it before that meeting.
Okay.
So, ready to go?
And I'd just like to say that one of the things that came out of that study is one of the areas that we compete in apparently quite successfully is at the arts, entertainment, and recreation. I think we do a pretty good job with, with entertainment, having the ban shell down here, and certainly in the arts, we have some exposure, but recreation is a big component, and one of those things that we really should focus on as a town, because we have those attributes that other towns don't have. So I think as we go forward, we have to be a bigger focus on coordinating recreation activities as one place where we could certainly compete, and compete very successfully with other towns and other states in the region.
Yeah, this, this, this actually gets back to, I think it's a good point, Mark, this gets back to actually one of Gary's points. Why, why would people come to Connecticut? Why would they come here? And this, what this report starts to focus on is Simsbury has an authentic place, it's not a, it's not a plastic place, it's not made up place, it's not like Celebration, Florida, where it's a brand-new place created out of nothing. It's, it's an authentic place, and to me, why would somebody move here to New Jersey?
That's a good question. Why am I staying? That's the real question.
You don't like.
I'm too old.
But there are questions like that, and people, and, and frankly, I'm, you know, sort of ask these same questions, and why, why would I stay in Connecticut? And those are the kinds of things we need to focus on and emphasize, and get people here that are interested in that. No question, it's expensive place, no question. Why do we stay? Because we like it for whatever reason, whether it's recreation, whether it's because our kids are here, our family's here, whether it's because of the...
It's a very high quality of life.
Yeah.
You live near the parts of this country.
Yeah.
You look at the quality of life here, and you say, because people say, I'd say, why, why pay all those taxes? And yeah, but the quality of life is very high.
And I think that's what, what the, the economic implementation, marketing action study focuses on, is the quality of life here, and to get that information out there so that people know, as Chris saw, schools and so on, whatever it is, we need to get that out there so people know it. It's, we just don't want to keep it a secret anymore, we want to make sure that people know it, and try to get them to come in here. We're actually having a tremendous amount of good luck with development, I think the West Street development is coming along really well, Dorset Crossing, just to sort of deviate for a second, is coming along, the zoning commission looked on Monday night at a, at an, an application for another 168 units up there, market rate housing. The MS development is coming forward, there's 24 more units there, they're ready to break ground very shortly on that, so, so things are moving along. There are some significant things that we'll be seeing before the end of the year with regard to the Town Center, we can't talk about a lot of details yet, but I think that'll be very interesting as well. So things are, are moving along, and, and some...
Hiram, on the MS development up on Dorset Crossing, we alluded to, talked a little bit at one time about the, the transformer, the double transformers that's going in there with a lot of high voltage coming in. Now, running, walking around that site up there, and I was up there a couple of days ago, those 46 units are going to be within spitting distance of the transformers, okay? What's, what's the, there's a lot of concern by a lot of people on living close to transformers, where there's a lot of this magnetic energy floating around, you know? What's, what's the position of the town on that? Because I, I, I would never move any of my grandchildren next to it, maybe some old guys like me, okay, you don't have long, so it doesn't make any difference, but to put that thing up there, it really, I think, I'm not sure how the town has looked at that.
I think there are a couple of things, Dave. One is that the, the whole concept of the electromagnetic fields, EMS, for example, have been looked at by the state, state's been, been very closely involved with the, with the financing of that facility as well, as well as the people that have, that are constructing it, have looked at it as well, and have determined that it's acceptable levels of, of risk. Every, every place is a risk, but it's acceptable.
Acceptable to whom?
I, I was, I was looking at a house that was near high-voltage lines, and I had similar concerns, and I spoke with the owner of the house, and she was a neurologist, and she was eminently more qualified to assess those risks than I were, and she, and she had small children as well, and she gave me a, a very short course in electromagnetic radiation, and, and someone who knows way more about that than I ever will, and had done additional research before buying a house there, if, if she was convinced of the safety of that, then, you know, that, that's good enough from it.
There are independent consultants who will take EMF readings underneath the lines in your home, and I have represented clients who've purchased or sold homes near high-voltage lines, and quite honestly, the EMFs that are coming off my phone right now are more concerning, or when I microwave popcorn, standing underneath the lines. So the readings are more consistent on the way they, my understanding from CLMP, the way they design the lines and the arc, and I'm not a scientist, but they somehow are able to minimize the EMFs that come off those lines, the way they design the placement of the lines.
Yeah, the other thing is that when those are designed, you notice they're, they're significantly up in the air, there's no question about that, so, you know, 345 KV lines are significantly above the elevation, so that the, the area around those lines that's affected by EMFs, and I spent a lot of time a couple of years ago studying this.
Does the town have any liability in this?
No.
Town's got deep pockets.
I, no comment on that.
Okay. Moving on, could you comment on Big Y?
Sure. The, the town has completed all its permitting processes that the Big Y needs to move forward, and down to their remaining, the skating center needs to sign the easement to allow them to use the driveway coming out, and that's what it's down to. That easement's been presented to the skating center about three weeks ago, and the skating center has yet to sign it, and that's where we are. As soon as they sign it, they can move forward.
I'll just add a couple of things. We were at Chamber the other day, and Mr. Wagner did confirm the last remaining piece is between two private organizations, and it doesn't look like it's cracked, he's done everything, and the boards have done everything that's been asked with them. I just wanted to add that Town Council has also met with the representatives from Big Y and offered to assist in any way, and I know, Hiram, you've offered to assist in any way, although it doesn't involve anything that the town needs to do. It is, at this point, all that's left is the dispute between two private organizations, and that's what's left to be resolved.
I will also just add, too, that I, I did call Rick Wagner after that Chamber meeting and said that I'd be happy to facilitate a meeting between the two parties if there could be anything to be done to, to clarify any issues that you've made, that's it. He had indicated to me he's going to talk to Big Y, I haven't heard back from the skating center, but I'm happy to facilitate that as well. So whatever we can do to move it forward, we will, but as far as the town's concerned, they could start construction tomorrow.
Could I take a couple of minutes to talk about the history, the quick history on this, because I know a lot, because I was involved in it? And, look, we've got a fish on the hook, and we can't seem to land the fish, so to speak, okay? And just let me finish this, good deals don't last forever, and this thing's been going on three, four, almost five years. Now, I'm not trying to place blame on anybody, but it seems to me the town is so excited about planning and saving things, we've got a live one there, and we can't seem to land it, and that's the issue, you know?
I, I think to Lisa's point that, you know, the town has really done absolutely everything that it can.
No, I disagree, that's not true.
Well, what, what do you think the town should do now?
Well, that's why you have to go back on the history of what it is, and right now...
But specific to where we are right now, what do you think the town should do?
You have to understand how we get to where we are, you know? We're doomed to repeat problems if we don't understand how things evolve. There are a lot of interplays on that whole site up there, like a lot of people here probably don't realize that the Ford Building is up there, is sitting on ownership that's not under the Wagner jurisdiction. Okay, that has a long trail in history, this, that's why deals that don't get consummated don't last forever. Now, this thing's been going on forever, and it seems to me that we ought to really get it hold of.
What we need right now, the town has completed everything we need, the state...
No, the town hasn't completed everything.
What are we missing? Specifically?
We're missing what he just said, they haven't signed the deal, the two guys.
No, what does the town do?
Well, if I, if I were running the town, I'd do a lot of things differently, but that's not the issue.
No, but what specifically are you recommending?
You want to negotiate without going back through the history of it?
No, no.
Go, go talk to Gris, what's his...
We'll do this another time, because right now, we have, we have 20 minutes...
Yeah, it's always manana, it's been manana for four years, go ahead.
So, that's where we are with Big Y, it's up to them to deal with the skating center and reach their agreement.
I hope they don't leave you.
But, would you want to go to item number six?
Which is?
Which is, for consideration, a possible vote recommended approval capital region natural hazard mitigation?
That, that was a plan, I think I submitted the executive summary to everyone, there's one part of that that I just thought was interesting, I wanted people to be aware of. There's a recommendation that towns incorporate into their regulations low-impact development stormwater controls, and I'm anxious to have the board say, yeah, we think that's a good idea. We did that in the Town Center, we did an LID study, I'm anxious to have as much support as possible, because next, you know, next few months, I'd like to move that forward into a, an actual regulation, so...
And what can EDC do?
If you will vote to support that, or recommend the recommendations that are contained in the executive summary, that'd be great.
Okay, did, did everybody take a look at that, or, okay?
Is, could I have...
On the front page, they missed one bullet, bears. That's the one hazard they missed.
How was it distributed? It meant one.
Bullet, right? It's not there.
How did that go out? Did you email it to all?
Yeah, it was attached.
It was part of the, on the website.
Do we want to take a vote on that now, or push that over into a November meeting?
If you could now, that'd be great.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the LID regulations going to affect any of the way we are doing any of these form-based codes for...
It actually fits in perfectly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, if we want to, if, would somebody like to make a motion that the EDC is in favor?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I abstain.
So we have one, two, three...
We don't have a forum.
We don't have a forum.
Okay, so the consensus, the consensus, the sense of the meeting was that we are in favor, but no vote, formal vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, going back to item number five, we have an idea for possibility for the Hartford property as to something that's thinking outside the box, and Jay's going to make a, a brief presentation on it.
Sure, this, this will be very brief, this is a concept that could fit into the Hartford, the Hartford property, and the idea is to create a statewide innovation hub and to have it here in Simsbury, and it would be modeled after the CIC, the Cambridge Innovation Center, which is in, right up the road there in Cambridge, Massachusetts, which is a, it's a flexible space, all-inclusive type of arrangement, where someone could rent anywhere from a chair to table, to a cube, to an office, to several thousand square feet, so very, very flexible. The important distinction between, you know, what we've been thinking about for the Hartford site versus what's going on in Cambridge, and other, and other sites that are kind of known as incubators, is that this wouldn't be a completely startup type of facility. I mean, there's 600,000 square feet, and we have 23,000 people in Simsbury, and maybe five times that much in Farmington Valley, so we don't have the critical mass for 600, 600,000 square feet startups, but what we would do to fill in a lot of that would be innovation groups of larger companies, and we would be focusing on, while anyone would be welcome, we would be focusing on the four industries that the D E C D has identified as critical to the state's economic growth. So that would be insurance, financial services, bioscience, precision manufacturing, and clean technology. So the notion is that those larger companies bring their innovation groups here, and they're paying market rents, and the benefit to the big companies is they can, they can get their groups kind of out of headquarters, because if you want to think about innovation, it's, it's hard to do it when you're kind of stuck in your same old environment, there's a cross-pollination of ideas, both within some of their peers at larger companies, but also obviously the startups, because the startups are going to be a big component. So the other benefit to them is they get access to kind of cutting-edge technologies, applications and approaches from the startup community that they wouldn't otherwise get. Startups can come here, they could pay market rents, they could pay subsidized rents, depending upon how the relationship works, and they have a benefit of being with peers and startups, they like doing that, and they also have the benefit of having larger companies there, because big companies represent potential customers, potential partners, and possibly even strategic investors. So those are kind of the two primary kind of constituents that would be there, but there's lots of other people. We've got lots of rooms, so there's lots of other people we could bring in there, right? So we could bring in, there's a lot of kind of work-from-home people, people who might work, it could be a small company or a large company, but they're working remotely, and they need a place to go. The other, the other idea is something that Hiram touched on before, which is foreign companies, bringing foreign companies, and they might be, you know, small, medium, large, who are looking to have a beachhead here in, somewhere in North America, and we talk a lot about Simsbury being expensive, but for many of these industries, for, you know, technology, financial services, bioscience, well, there are components of Simsbury that are expensive, you know, property tax, yes, Simsbury is also pretty cheap relative to other places these companies do business. If you're looking at San Francisco, New York, the 128 corridor, if you're talking about in, or even Fairfield County, where a lot of the hedge fund activity is, Simsbury has as probably 50% cost of living of those places. So while manufacturing, does it make a lot of sense to do a lot of old-school manufacturing in Simsbury? Probably not, but some of the other industries, including precision manufacturing, it makes, it makes more sense. You know, some other, other tenants in there, technology sponsors like Amazon, Google, who would be servicing the companies in there, at least an option to service them, they'd have some potential captive customers, would also be paying market rents, you have, you'd have attorneys, capital providers, marketing people, a lot of business services providers coming in, as well as vendors that kind of make this really an interesting ecosystem. So you have cafes... So, you have cafes and pubs and all those type of little, little service businesses inside the campus. And finally, there, there could be an education component. It could be, you know, K through 12 Montessori or Magnet. It could be a satellite campus of a university. It could be like an ITT tech, which doesn't have a presence in Connecticut, that could be putting some programs that are kind of consistent with the types of things that are looking to, you know, that we're looking to build out. So, this could be done, it could be the entire building, it could be portions of the building. Obviously, still very, very early on in the process, you know, some, I mean, obviously brings a lot of high-paying jobs to Hartford. Hartford would kind of escape some of their, you know, tax issues and maintenance issues with the building. And the other thing I think would be, you know, critical to think about is if you have something like this, it makes the other 40 acres, it makes the rest of the Hartford property a lot more valuable with respect to future development. If the Hartford, to the extent the Hartford still owns that property, obviously that, that benefits them and it clearly benefits the town as well. So, in terms of kind of where we are now, you know, there's a small group of kind of entrepreneurs and capital sources that have taken the idea and we're working on that. Between two of the group members, you know, they'd be willing to do, you know, about 6,000 square feet of space. One of them's growing substantially, so that could increase over time. To the extent they moved in, you know, tomorrow, that would be, you know, around $100,000 a year, you know, rent-wise. So, the next step is kind of bring more people in that community, in the kind of entrepreneurial, the local entrepreneurial community, you know, to the project. And we also need to obviously talk with the Hartford to get their buy-in to the concept. Now, they're, you know, they're working with CB Richard Ellis. If they could sell the building tomorrow to a German manufacturing company, clearly they'd do that. So, we're not asking the Hartford to kind of commit to this as, as the course of action, but talk to us a little bit about, gee, how do you think this might potentially work into your plans? And, and what, you know, what could we do to kind of make this an appealing alternative for you guys? And once we do that, you know, then it'll be time to kind of get a better handle on what the costs might be, and then bringing in, you know, DECD to kind of help us, you know, probably more with the marketing efforts to the larger companies to get them interested in, in participating.
Jay, would Hartford still be the owner, or do you see another general partner?
You know what, it, there's, there's real, there's a ton of ways to skin the cat. If, if the Hartford's interested, they could clearly continue to own the building, they could kind of be the landlord, so to speak, and maybe they'd want some space in there. You could have another group own it, you could have an investor group own it. You know, there's, there's really lots of ways it could be structured.
I think that's a critical element.
Well, the critical element, you know, part of it depends on what, what Hartford's interested in doing, because they, they still own the la, yeah, they still own the land. So, it's, you know, so what, what do they want to do? If this is appealing to them, it, it, it's not gonna be a linear process, right? Because, you know, what's going to be critical to the success of this is getting, you know, maybe half a dozen big companies to say, yeah, you know what, we wanna put somewhere between a dozen and 50 people in our innovation group, excuse me, in our innovation groups in this center. And if you do that, then you're gonna be able to get the critical mass, then you, then you, then you've kind of have the nucleus there, and you'll be able to get the startups in, you'll be able to get the other companies in, and, you know, Hartford will take a look and, and see what makes sense for them. Do they want to continue, you know, do they wanna, you know, kind of continue on owning it, and this is just another way to lease part of it? Maybe this whole thing is just a pod, and there's other, and they have another pod going for something else entirely. I mean, there's, it's a huge space, you know, there's lots of potential parties, there's lots of moving parts. So, I mean, I think the key is, in terms of structure, you know, it's, you know, there's lots of ways to do it, you know, kind of, we need to be flexible, and, you know, really kind of comes down to, you know, kind of, you know, what works, what makes sense for the Hartford, because they're, you know, they own it.
Jay, you're not suggesting the town acquire that, are you?
I'm not suggesting that, it's not, I, I mean, that, you could, you could structure something like that where the town might be the owner.
No, but I'm wondering why you're making this presentation to us and not to the Hartford?
I'm gonna be talking with the Hartford, I've communicated with them, and hopefully next week we'll be talking.
Good.
I think that, two critical questions, does the Hartford want to be a long-term landlord, an owner of a property that is at long-term leases for these types of things? And I think that from a housing standpoint, if we're bringing in groups of people from other areas of the country, we don't necessarily have the housing stock to, because some of them may be looking for temporary options, rentals, things like that. And I know there's a lot coming down the pike in terms of rental units, but I think, you know, there's a chicken and the egg kind of thing. We have to offer them places to house these employees that might be, it could be a nine-month project, a year, you know, they might not necessarily want to buy a house or buy something because they're going back to wherever they're from. Or they might want to settle here, I mean, there's...
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess to both your points, you're right, we need to figure out where the Hartford's kind of heads out on this thing. And if they're on board with the concept and they wanna be, and they wanna be the landlord, terrific, we could do it that way. If they say, gee, that sounds like something that would be great for the community, but, you know, we really, you know, kind of, we really need to be done with this, there's ways to structure around that, too. In terms of the housing piece, you know, the thought is that, that most of the people would probably be coming from a commutable distance, at least initially. You know, I, I think there's a fair amount of, of, of housing available. There's, there's, there's lots of stuff on the, well, as a guy who's got a house that's been sitting in the market, I think there's some housing stock available. So, but we're not talking about bringing in, you know, you know, hundreds of new, of people brand-new to the area to be kind of, to be living here. Most of the people, at least initially, would probably be folks who were kind of in the area and would be commuting in, but to that point, that's where the other 40-acre parcel comes in. So, if, if you get some success here, then on that 40-acre parcel, then maybe you start talking about doing some type of, you know, lofts or condos or rental things, or even hoteling space, where people who might, you know, where people who might have space at the, you know, kind of at the innovation center, and maybe they're coming from a distance in Connecticut. So, maybe they're coming from Fairfield County, they don't want to do that every day, maybe two nights a week, they wanna, you know, they wanna stay over. If you have kind of a, a hoteling type of space, you can even build it into the package where they're kind of staying overnight there and obviously spending money in the community, you know, kind of then it would, you know, it'd work that way. So, there's, you're, you're right, at some point in time, that need would, would need to be addressed. And I think once you, you kind of get a critical mass and you're really kind of getting going, then you could do a whole bunch of, you know, kind of really interesting things and kind of tackle those questions.
The real key would, how would you set up a mechanism, a financial mechanism that would carry this building for a certain period of time as this transition would go? So, if you can't really answer that question, maybe DECD would say, you know, we'll support you for three years. Because if you look at the carrying cost of the building, which is about $6 million a year, somebody has to foot that bill while this takes place, so that would be probably a big hurdle.
Yeah, my, my, my guess is that the Hartford's not gonna want to own this building, that they're gonna want out, because I think it was $8 million is the total carrying cost of this building. It's 30 years old, they're gonna want to get out, it's not an efficient building.
They might, and that's, you know, the other thing, too, is you have to look at, you know, kind of, what are those costs and can they be whittled down some? Then, you know, I've been talking to a couple of people who think, you know, maybe they can be. We don't know what that really $6 million number includes, a chunk of its property taxes, which, you know, the, the town might be able to kind of help out on for a period of time while this thing gets up and running. The other thought is if you're, if you're only using portions of it, the other part of the buildings, you know, you're kind of, you know, mothballing, for lack of a better word, so your, your kind of costs go down. So, that's, you know, as we kind of, you know, start beginning to have conversations with the Hartford, one of, one of the questions is, well, gee, what could we do about costs? And, you know, could we, could we get a little creative there?
I think the other thing we have to be careful of, because I've heard some from residents, the conversation about some sort of school facility, that comes off our tax rolls when that happens, because they're not for profits.
And they just built a magnet school in Avon, too.
Right, and it's a concern of residents, because obviously it affects our grand list. And while it's a, I think, a great idea in one respect, you know, from a tax standpoint...
It's a killer.
It's a killer.
Depending on how it's structured, though. So, there's, there's two ways around that. One is, you know, payment and leave taxes, which is, which, you know, schools, nonprofits pay, it's not guaranteed money. The, the other thought is that if the school is a tenant and they're not the owner of the property, well, then they're paying rent to the property owner, so it's not as though, so if, whether it...
But their personal property is not taxed, because there's a not-for-profit, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but their computers, their desks, their whatever they have in the school, they don't pay property taxes on as a, as a school.
And that, that may vary, that, I'm sure that's the case, but that's, I mean, I think that's a pretty small consideration if they're paying. So, let's, let's, let's do a hypothetical, okay? Let's suppose, let's suppose the Hartford doesn't want to deal with the site anymore, and there is an investor group that has the site, and an investor group owns the site. And there's a school that's taking, I don't know, 50,000 square feet of space. That investor group, they're paying tax on the whole 600. The, they're, they're getting income from that school on the 50,000, and if the only thing that's not being taxed is personal property and 50,000 square feet, I mean, that's, that, that's not, that's not a, I don't think that's a big deal. We, we've gotta think creatively about this. I mean, we're not gonna necessarily replace every last dime of tax revenue that we're getting from this facility, at least in the near term. I mean, we really have to think long-term about this, because if you, i- if we can bring something there that even within three years is generating 50% of the revenue, of the tax revenue, and it's going on all cylinders, then that 40 acres becomes a lot more valuable. Then it really becomes compelling to put some high-value, to put, do some high-value development there. And at the same time, even before that happens, the, the business that's in, you know, the, the center, they're still gonna be going out to lunch, they're gonna be going out to breakfast, they're gonna be staying overnight, they're gonna be buying stuff, and all that's going to help Main Street and all the other local businesses. So, I think we kind of have to think, you know, kind of big picture and long-term when we're thinking about kind of what happens.
Okay, so, let's conclude on that. And one other thing, we're not gonna get to item number seven, but I'd like some thought to be given to the allocation of our budget each year as to whether we should be looking, before we set our budget, should we set any part of it aside for any other interesting economic development ideas that may be brought to us requesting financing in some part? So, let's leave that for next, next meeting. I have to think that's a good idea, a bad idea, or whatever, because I have sometimes, whether it's, whether it's a study or whether it's for development of some part of town, should we look at some part of our budget as something we can allocate to that, aside from how we allocated today? So, with that, looking at the time, nine o'clock. Anything else, questions?
Just one quick thing.
Yes?
I spoke with Lisa Hebner earlier this week, and the person who's working on the website for the town is ready for me to contact him to make some changes to the EDC website with links and whatever.
Yep.
So, if you have any input on what you'd like to see on that website, our portion of the website, please let me know, so I can, when I set up time to meet with him, I can go over that.
Excellent, we can talk about that, if you want me to put that on the agenda?
Yep, that'd be great.
Otherwise, we have a motion for adjournment. Second? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
So, you wanna...
I need to see you.
How do we turn this recording thing?
Pull a plug.
Maybe there's a black button.
Hit the plug.
Should get you on the email list, so they shall send you a minute.